Thank you for coming, everyone. At this time, I ask that everyone please mute your device to avoid interruptions until called upon. I call to order the Board Business Meeting of the Board of Education of Harford County on September 8, 2025 at 6:02 PM. This business meeting will be conducted in a hybrid fashion. Ms. Rallo, please take your roll call.
Mrs. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sewell?
Here.
Dr. Mueller?
Present.
Mr. McVicker?
Here.
Mr. Corn?
Present.
Mrs. Hahn?
Present.
Mrs. Bruce?
Here.
Ms. Alvarez. Mrs. Alvarez, I see you online. If you could please unmute. Okay, I will skip her for now. Vice President Page?
Here.
Diane Alvarez?
Present. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. President Pointon?
Here.
Superintendent Bolson?
Here.
This completes the roll call.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, please read this evening's statement of process.
The following process will be used this evening. Board members and staff will mute their device until called upon. Board members, please hold any comments or questions until the end of each presentation. Following the presentation, Dr. Pointon will call on each board member for comments and questions. Board members and staff members should restate their name before speaking. Dr. Bolson will respond to questions or call on the appropriate staff member to do so. When a roll call is taken for a motion, I ask that you please reply with a yes or a no.
Thank you. Board members, you have the agenda before you. Can I please have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda?
Carol Bruce, so moved.
Denise Perry, I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Thank you, the motion passes. Please lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if we could please read this evening's rules of order.
Good evening. I'm DJ Rad, Regional Coordinator for the Office of the Secretary. Thank you for attending today's Board of Education Business Meeting. In keeping with the business purpose of the meeting, I would like to share updated practices that will be enforced this evening and for all future board meetings. During the business meeting, all attendees are reminded to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Grandstanding, which includes applause, audible commentary, excessive gestures, standing ovations, and similar distracting behaviors, is not permitted. Likewise, threatening words, gestures, or behaviors are not permitted. The rules of order require commenters to refrain from identifying individuals who are members of the public and do not sit on the board. Comments should be directed to the board, and it is not acceptable to address or identify members of the public by name. In the context of a board business meeting, the public includes school staff other than the superintendent. Additionally, disparaging comments, personal attacks, and inflammatory remarks about specific schools, personnel, any person or group are not permitted. We appreciate your understanding and are committed to ensuring a respectful and constructive dialogue in our meetings. Please feel free to reach out if you have any further concerns or need additional support. Should an attendee engage in one of the prohibited behaviors, thus detracting from the business purpose of this meeting, the attendee will receive a warning to immediately cease the prohibited behavior. If the attendee does not cease to prohibit a behavior, the attendee will be escorted from the business meeting by security. We appreciate your respectful attendance and participation and look forward to a productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get started here in just a minute, but once again, we do have a large number of speakers that are registered this evening. You know, we're interested in hearing your feedback, but we do have a meeting to run as well. So I initially allotted for 45 minutes for public comment. I'm extending that, I think, just past 60 minutes, but time will need to be cut down. I will say also that many of the items that folks are here to speak for tonight are actually not issues that the board is currently considering or that are on the business agenda for this evening, but you're still welcome to your right to say what you want. I will say that there are better forums if you have issues that are not on a current agenda. One of the things that the board does is listening sessions. We'll have our first listening session on September 30th. Do we have a location for that one yet?
C Milton Wright High School.
C Milton Wright High School. That's from 5:30 to 7:30 PM Tuesday, September 30th. We'll do plenty of these throughout the year. The board and the leadership will be there, and that's an opportunity for you to speak without a timer and for the board to also engage back in conversation with you because during your public comment here this evening, the board doesn't engage with you at all. So I find that forum to be far more constructive than these few minutes that you have here in front of the board at the business meeting. So with that in mind, in-person speakers will be called by the board secretary. All speakers will receive a minute and a half unless you're a group. If you're a group, you can receive two minutes this evening. Speakers may be interrupted, may be given notice when they have 30 seconds left. Let's begin with in-person speakers, please.
President Pointon, this evening, we have 41 speakers. We will start with Ellen Bouskin, followed by Neil Thompson and Tarsey Thompson.
Ellen Bouskin? I was at the last board meeting, and a couple of comments really struck me that were said by parents of Harford County students. They said that the banned book Flamer had provided them an opportunity to have a conversation with their child about issues facing everyday teenagers. This board has ignored the Harford County librarians, the Harford County Reconsideration Committee, and MSDE curriculum. Harford County parents have an opt-out process for books they don't want their child to read, and I oppose the banning of the book Flamer. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Neil Thompson. The Freedom to Read Act specifies that each local school system is to develop a policy and procedures to review objections to materials in a school library media program. Following the requirements of the Freedom to Read Act, the reconsideration committee reviewed Flamer. Yet, the board followed no process to review Flamer, or if you did, it's one more secret surrounding the closed June 26 hearing. The hearing should have centered on whether the reconsideration committee followed procedures, not whether the board liked the book. From now on, will the board, using opinions, overturn all decisions of the reconsideration committee? Respect the reconsideration committee, whose members have been trained. Respect their recommendations. Respect the law.
Good evening. My name is Tarsey Thompson. I'm a Harford County resident, grandmother, retired teacher. I oppose the recent removal of a library book, and I oppose the way that it was done. It came in through educated and professional librarians. When it was challenged, the book was then supported by volunteers who were trained through the Freedom to Read Act. It was then removed, but it was only removed by the opinions of one parent and five board members who didn't review the book the way the committee did. Harford County Public School has procedures for appeals and hearings, and under a section titled "Decision and Order," the last sentence says this: "Final action of the board shall be taken publicly at a board meeting following the hearing." But you kept it a secret. It's not in the board minutes following the hearing, and that's one of the things that I'm upset about. So, thank you.
Our next speakers are Susan Deeny, Charlene Hopp, and William Martino.
Hello, my name is Susan Deeny. I'm a retired public librarian, and I'm here tonight to just let my feelings be heard about the banning of this book. We've talked about this in the past, and it's one thing if the book is required reading. This was not required reading. This was something that could be in the school library so that people who needed to find the book might be able to find the book. This is something that just stands in the face of anything that's right. I mean, parents have a right to monitor what their children read. They have a duty to monitor what their children read, to discuss books with their children, maybe to read books together. They have a right to that, all parents do, but they don't have a right to prevent other children from reading material that they need to read. They don't have a right to prevent material from being found in the library, and I think it's just a terrible thing to have removed this book when it is a perfectly wonderful book to read if anybody who opposes it ever has read it. Thank you.
Charlene Hopp. Okay, Mr. William Martino.
Good evening. I am discouraged that HCPS, led by Dr. Bolson, continues to push for student-centered education policy instead of a parent-centered education. It is especially difficult for a minor to determine what's right and what's wrong. I'm reminded of an episode on the Andy Griffith Show where a drifter, played by Buddy Epsin, comes to Mayberry and begins to corrupt the thinking of Sheriff Taylor's son, Opie. The drifter tells the sheriff, quote, "Why not let the boy decide for himself what direction he should follow?" End quote. Then Sheriff Taylor tells the drifter, quote, "I am afraid it doesn't work that way. You can't allow a young one to decide for himself. He will go after the first shiny thing with ribbons on it. When he finds out there is a hook in it, it's too late. Wrong ideas are packaged with so much glitter, it is hard to convince them that other things are better for them in the long run. As a parent, all you can say is, 'Trust me and wait. We try to keep temptation away.'" End quote. It is disgraceful to think that temptation is brought to the children by HCPS, led by Dr. Bolson, along with state-mandated activist material. This activist material will scramble the brains of minors, leaving parents a mess to deal with that could take years to fix, if it ever gets fixed. Just look at the purple shirts that attend this meeting. It never got fixed in them. This is insanity.
Our next speakers are Katie York, Helen Mann, and David Bauer.
Good evening. My name is Katie York, and every time I get up here, I always have so much I want to say and struggle to get it out. One thing I wanted to point out is that this weekend was a year since we lost student Warren Grant from Joppa Town High. I know I only have a little over a minute, so I don't want to take a minute off, but I just wanted to acknowledge that in this community, as someone who lives in Edgewood and has a student that was the same age. Dr. Pointon, you mentioned that there are better forums for discussion, and I do agree. However, there are some times where public comments are helpful for not just the board, but also the community members. Additionally, when we write emails to you and you reply back saying that I need to file an MPA, I request asking, to answer the question, have you read the book Flamer before you voted on it? It's hard to feel that there's really much of a conversation. I do look forward to the community conversations and the forums as well. Regarding items on the agenda, there are going to be lots of things that can't be on the agenda, like I asked you to include Flamer again, just like I did last month. As far as items on the agenda, calendar-wise, I did want to point out the fact that edweek.org said that we have 70% of schools meet before Labor Day, and I wanted to note that we do not and that it's not being considered for future, and I would like that to be considered. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Helen Mann. When you look at the storyline of many banned books, it's often about the life experiences of people of color, of indigenous people, and those in the LGBTQIA community. Why do challenges repeatedly come up with these particular communities? Banning their stories is dehumanizing. Are only certain voices allowed and others silenced? This is not a step toward democracy or First Amendment rights. Oppressing anyone in our society hurts everyone.
Good evening. I'm David Bauer. I'm going to start this evening by saying thank you to the board members who are doing the right thing. For those of you who voted against Ms. Hahn to be VP, thank you for working to maintain the decency and integrity of the board. I'm sorry that you all have to sit through the lectures aimed at your fellow board members for the actions that four of them took during the summer. So this is the third meeting now that we haven't had regular public comment app. And, sorry, Dr. Pointon, but you brought this on yourself as part of your vote on the book and your choice to not consider allowing the book to be high school-only instead of high school and middle school. I was disturbed by your assertion on your Facebook post about that. I did ask you about that in, I guess, July, and I noticed that your newspaper op-ed, you only implied it instead of saying it outright. So to all of you, thank you for your service and good luck.
Our next speakers are James Ramsey, Maureen Westner, and Joseph Fleckenstein.
I'm James Ramsey. Imagine if there were a letter from the president of the Harford County Board of Education to the Maryland Association of School Librarians justifying the removal of Huckleberry Finn from school libraries on the grounds that it contains pervasively racist language. And to support this, it listed several quotes of the N-word being used. Most of us would see just how shallow that is. We do, in fact, have a letter from the president of the Harford County Board of Education to the Maryland Association of School Librarians saying that another book, Flamer, has pervasively vulgar language, and to support this, he cites several examples of crude language. What he leaves out, though, is that most of those examples are part of the gauntlet of homophobia that the main character of Flamer has to suffer through, which is rather the whole point of the book. Funny thing that. Reinstate Flamer in the school libraries. Also, some bad ideas are wrapped in the flag.
Hello, I'm Maureen Westner, and I wanted to be said that I altogether oppose the banning of books, and I'm here this evening to say that I oppose the banning of the book Flamer. Mr. Pointon, you were quoted by CBS News saying that the book review procedure, a process nearly two years in the making, was developed with input from staff, board members, and members of the public. Why then does the board not trust the Library Materials Reconsideration Committee to do what it was designed to do? Why would the board then vote behind closed doors to circumvent that committee's decision, reinstate Flamer, and stop banning books? And I also want to say, I taught in Harford County for 20, 22 years, 23 years. I taught middle school for 16 years. I taught, I did hall duty, I did bus duty. You are all so concerned that children will learn vulgar language from Flamer, but I have to tell you, your kids, they already know that vulgar language. I've heard much, if not all, of the language used in the hallway, outside, at bus time by middle school students. The language in Flamer is not new to them. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Hahn on the time that she was our board VP. I think she did an outstanding job, and she has courage and integrity, in my humble opinion. I am HO, whatever the acronym is. Did a wonderful job. She's going to keep doing a good job, and I believe that Lauren, I don't really know Lauren that well, but I think Lauren's going to do a really good job as our new VP, so thank you. Actually, when you mentioned the listening session earlier, this actually might be better for a listening session, and I might go to one of those. I was wondering if someone could reach out to me, or I'll reach out to them, about what the process is to, if you're interested in suggesting like an elective class, like at the middle school or high school level, how that works, what the process is. I know we've had a couple new courses, African American History and a couple other things in the recent past, and I was wondering what that process is to make that happen, if it's possible at all. So just wanted to say that, and thank you very much. Thanks.
Our next speakers are Carrie Friendston, Aravinda Palamari, and Tanya Tayo.
Good evening, everyone. When I was in high school, freshman year, I actually wanted to kill myself in front of my classmates for the severe bullying that I had endured. The song Jeremy by Pearl Jam, which is about that exact same thing, most likely saved my life because I felt seen, I felt heard, given that society was looking for a tall, slim girl. Flamer provides that same support for children who maybe don't understand their place in society or where they need to fit. I would urge the board to vacate their decision because, again, as other people stated, it wasn't done in the proper format, and your committee did approve this book. Thank you.
Good evening. When last we met, a gentleman asked me if I thought students should have access to a book that contained all this vulgarity. I said that while those lines had been selectively publicized by the board president, the book itself conveyed an uplifting affirmative message. He shrugged and said, "Well, do it without that." Not to brag or anything, but I actually never use vulgar language. Even when I sing "All Too Well," I don't say the word that comes before patriarchy, present company accepted. I mean, I actually say the letter, but I didn't want to say it here in case the letter after ECC was listening. Anyway, back to the gentleman's question, why in a book about a teenage boy dealing with bullying should there be examples of that bullying and the hostile environment complete with vulgarity that makes it harder for him to express himself and easier to question his worth, easier for his thoughts to go to dark places? This is kind of asking, this is kind of like asking why we can't have the Sound of Music without the Nazis or the movie Jaws without the shark. Restricting access to a book like Flamer does not protect children. No one who reads this book will be tempted to behave like the bullies. Rather, acknowledging the kinds of difficulties that kids face will allow the kids to feel seen, heard, understood, and feel hope that things get better. A sanitized portrayal that denies the problem and denies their suffering will not do that. Please reinstate the book. Do not ban Flamer.
Good evening. This subject, I know, was all over social media this weekend and today, the subject of boys and girls being able to use vice versa locker rooms. The fact that all of you are going along with the MSDE guidance and not federal level of guidance is absolutely appalling. What is going, what is it going to take for all of you to comply with federal orders? I guess you all really want to lose your federal funding. I really thought most of this was straightened out in the fall of 2022, when Bob Cassley called out the prior BOE. At that point, my kids were done with gym class and only had to really deal with the locker rooms for sports. It seemed like all of that at that point and the following year, everything was under control. It seems like you all have a problem or you're going to. All students must feel safe, so whatever that is, whatever it takes, I'm asking for my nieces and nephews' sake and as a taxpayer that you all do everything you can to make that happen. This is a total nonsense and very disturbing. Our test scores are still less than mediocre. What is going, what is it going to take to get a curriculum that actually teaches our children to excel? 60% of our students are actually reading on grade level, while 40% are not. And 28% proficiency in math, seriously, we are celebrating that? You all need to take priorities in check, and I am sick of the excuses. Do whatever it takes to improve our children's test scores. Stop dumbing down our kids. Thank you.
Next, we have Lorette Vitussey, followed by Ronnie Davis and Janet Deviney.
My name is Lorette Vitussey, and I'm opposed to the banning of Flamer. As the mother of two now-adult sons, I can vividly remember their turbulent teenage years, especially those of my older son who was on the autism spectrum. Both my sons were Cub Scouts and then Boy Scouts, and both attended scouting summer sleepover camps. Unfortunately, my older son was subject to so much bullying and teasing that he ended up dropping out of Boy Scouts after a particularly brutal week of summer camp at age 13. I wish books like Flamer had been available in the school library at that time, as I believe it would have resonated with my son in his struggle for self-acceptance and in learning how to socially connect with his peers in positive ways. Please reinstate the book. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ronnie Davis. I'm a former teacher. I find it unbelievable that some of you voted to ban this book, and I'd like to know if anyone who voted to ban it actually read the book, because I finally got to read the book Flamer. The last several meetings, there was a lot of pornography thrown around, passages and all from people. They were read, and quite honestly, I was surprised when reading it. There are very few, and they were used in this story to make a point, not strictly for porn. Let's be clear, this book is not pornography. It is the story of Aiden, a 14-year-old overweight boy who doesn't have the hubris to deal with the world. He is just trying to survive bullying, rejection, and the pain of not feeling like he belongs. Even in his own family, how many of you have not felt bullied? Maybe if you haven't, maybe you've been the bully. If you actually read it, you'd know the answers to some of these questions. What cruel nickname his brother calls him? What does his mother say when he tries to share his feelings? This isn't a story about graphic content. It's a story about a boy who feels worthless, who reaches his lowest point and who finds, still finds the strength to say, "I am enough, I want to live," something I would hope we would all want for our children. If you can't answer those questions, then maybe you haven't read the book. Maybe you should, because how can you condemn his story? But as far as banning books, it's a path towards Nazism. Is this truly where we want to take our county? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Janet Deviney, and my first job was in the library. I'm a mom and grandma, and I'm against the board ban on the award-winning book Flamer. It's recommended by the author for ages 14 and up, and the book is about bullying. The author draws on his own experience being bullied at scout camp. The bullies use curse words, suggestive language, and gestures to put the main character down. Please reinstate the book. I would also like to clarify that boys are not generally allowed in school bathrooms as posted today on Facebook by the board president. Transgender girls and non-binary and gender-fluid youth are allowed to use the bathroom they are most comfortable in according to who they are. Please be more inclusive of all of our students. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Inge Hobbs, followed by Delane Lewis and Annalise Albrecht. Is there a Ms. Hobbs?
Hello. My name is Inga Hobbs. I retired from Johns Hopkins Hospital, and I worked there for many years. I was born in Germany and grew up in Germany, and as you can see, I'm not really prepared. But that's how it all started in Germany with banning books. And I read the book. It is all about bullying. It's about growing up and having difficulty growing up. Both my children went to Harford County Public School, and they turned into wonderful young men, and my grandchildren go here, too. Please reconsider the ban of this book. Please. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, please state the name of your book, your group, and you receive two minutes.
Hi, my name is Delane Lewis. I'm here with Together We Will, Harford County, Upper Chesapeake. Thank you for the time. It's recommended by the author for ages fourteen and up, and the book is about bullying. The author draws on his own experience being bullied at scout camp. The bullies use curse words, suggestive language, and gestures to put the main character down. Please reinstate the book. I would also like to clarify that boys are not generally allowed in school bathrooms as posted today on Facebook by the board president. Transgender girls and non-binary and gender-fluid youth are allowed to use the bathroom they are most comfortable in according to who they are. Please be more inclusive of all of our students. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Inga Hobbs, followed by Delane Lewis and Annalise Albrecht. Is there a Ms. Hobbs?
Hello. My name is Inga Hobbs. I retired from Johns Hopkins Hospital, and I worked there for many years. I was born in Germany and grew up in Germany, and as you can see, I'm not really prepared. But that's how it all started in Germany with banning books. And I read the book. It is all about bullying. It's about growing up and having difficulty growing up. Both my children went to Hartford County Public School, and they turned into wonderful young men, and my grandchildren go here too. Please reconsider the ban of this book. Please. Thank you.
Ms. Lewis, please state the name of your book, your group, and you receive two minutes.
Hi, my name is Delane Lewis. I'm here with Together We Will, Hartford County, Upper Chesapeake. Thank you for the time. I just want to say that once you moved from simply reviewing this book as an appeal of the superintendent's decision, which had the very narrow perspective of was the decision arbitrary, unreasonable, or illegal, once you went from an appellate review process to a fact-finding, decision-making process, you changed the nature of the hearing, and you then began to make policy for the entire system. And that is something that you were required to do in public, with public comment and feedback. What we see is that those of you who voted to remove the book could not wait to push the decision through. In fact, many of you did it before even reading the book, revealing your own biases. What we have is a failure to truly reflect the community, because if you did, then your decision would also have more support amongst your fellow board members. And now what we have is a group of appointed people having an out-of-proportion influence on the outcome, a group that is not responsive to the community or any constituents, but only to the person who appointed them. Currently, there is no policy in place, even though it is mandated by the Maryland Freedom to Read Act. There is no policy preventing you from revisiting your own decision. But to help in this process, we will be resubmitting, re-offering the book to the school system to create an opportunity for you to revisit the issue. Just like there was no policy in place preventing you from making a moderated decision to perhaps keep the book in high schools and out of middle schools. Fear-mongering on these book and bathroom issues is what is what is wasting time and money.
Good afternoon. I am a fifth grader in elementary school. I can confirm the book Flamer is not in my school. This book has language that is too adult for me, but I, but I hear it from other, older kids. Books should not be banned. Restricting books based on age is the job of my school librarians.
Our next speaker is Lucy Buxton, Tiffany Wendy, and Andy Hutton.
Good evening, Lucy Buxton. Thank you for this time. I'm going to be very brief. I'm here to ask you to reinstate Flamer in the school system libraries. Thank you.
Tiffany Wendy?
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Wendy, and I'm a resident of Churchville, a stepmother to two boys ages ten and twelve, and a public health professional with over fifteen years of experience, including running a crisis intervention and suicide prevention center. I'm here to speak against the banning of Flamer from our school libraries. Book bans are un-American. They undermine free expression and access to knowledge, cornerstones of a healthy democracy. But banning Flamer is especially harmful because it directly targets our LGBTQIA+ students, a group that is already disproportionately at risk. According to the Trevor Project, LGBTQIA+ youth are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Aiden's story, the main character, mirrors what so many young people face: sheer shame, fear, isolation, and the desperate need for belonging. Books like Flamer can literally be lifesaving by showing students they are not alone. Telling LGBTQIA+ students that their stories and shame are shameful and that their struggles don't belong in our schools erodes their mental health and increases their isolation and vulnerability. As a public health professional who has worked on the front lines of suicide prevention, I can tell you, representation saves lives. This is not theory, it's evidence-based fact. I urge this board to reinstate Flamer and affirm that every student in Hartford County, regardless of who they are, deserves to be seen, valued, and safe in our schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I strongly oppose book banning in our schools. Education is about teaching students how to think, not what to think. Instead of banning books, let's give families choices. Every parent can already guide their own child's reading, but removing books takes the choice away from parents, the other parents. Let's trust our teachers, respect our students, and keep schools places of learning, not censorship. Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Smith, followed by Angela Smith and Cindy Popper.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Smith. I would also like to add my support to not banning this book. I think that leads a slippery slope. Once you start banning books, that generates a committee that has to evaluate which books are going to be good, which books are going to be bad. Once that starts, that line can be blurred. Where does it go? Where does it stop? Is it, it's an objective thing. If you don't like a book, you can just set it down. If you're a parent, you're concerned about what your child reads, pick up the book. If you think it's inappropriate, tell them to put it back in the library. It's not going to convert anybody. This, this book gives individuals some tools to navigate real-world circumstances: bullying, insecurity, low self-esteem. And it provides tools to help navigate through that and provide us a sense of outcome. In the book, Aiden, the main character, comes to a point of almost self-harm. He overcomes that. This book shows that. If this book could save one life, don't you think it's worth it? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Smith, and I did not write an eloquent speech. I actually was not planning on speaking here tonight, but I am a parent of two children that go to Patterson Mill Middle High School. I recently found out about the book banning, which I really upset me, that we are banning books. I then read the name of the book. I got a copy of the book and I read it, and I thought, no wonder the librarians didn't think this book should be banned. I read it. Every word I have heard in it, I have heard my children use. Unfortunately, I have heard them use worse when they're with their friends, and they don't know Mom can hear. And I thought, these are the issues I remember high school. These are the issues that we all struggle with. We're trying to find our identity. We're being bullied. We have all kinds of things we're dealing with. We're not just learning from books in a classroom. And I would like to know also, I know a gentleman spoke who said parents should have more say in what goes on in our children's schools. Well, how do we decide which parents have more say? Because I'm a parent, and I want my boys to have access to that book. So why are the parents that decided it should be banned, why are they more important than me?
Words matter. Our choice of words can help heal and uplift. They can hurt, divide, and discriminate. They can indicate opinions and biases. Words can make people feel welcomed and included, or make them feel dismissed and ostracized. You should be particularly careful of the words you use. With the exception of Mr. Corn, every one of you has been on this board for three years or more. At this point, you should not have to be reminded about your choice of words. You should not have to be reminded about the effects of the words that you use. I am referring to the use of the word "teacher" by a member of the board during their public remarks last meeting. The member said, "It is the teacher's last week of summer break." While not incorrect, the use of the word in this manner demonstrated to everyone else that works as a ten- or eleven-month employee for HCPS that they don't matter. With the use of one word, you told several thousand people that they aren't worth your time or the effort to choose your words more carefully, to acknowledge their existence, much less their necessity to ensuring that HCPS functions on a daily basis. Displays like this play out in many ways. Remarks like that show them that they aren't respected and valued. You should know better, and you need to do better.
Next, we have Kathy Kowalski, Janine Canito, and Kyla Palamari.
Good evening. I want to touch on two things tonight. The first is the book ban. What I find most disturbing is that the Book Reconsideration Committee did their due diligence and voted to retain it. Those on the board who voted to remove it may not have even bothered to read it. And let's not forget that some of you who voted to have it removed were not elected by your Hartford County voters. You were appointed, so arguing that you are representing the community is a fallacy. The parental rights argument doesn't hold water here either. All parents already have the right to contact their child's school media specialist and indicate what books they do not want their child to be able to check out. That's been in place for over two decades. That's nothing new. All children benefit from seeing themselves in books. It decreases the feelings of isolation. For some, it's the lifeline they need. Second, September is National Suicide Prevention Month. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people. It is estimated that at least one LGBTQ+ youth between the ages of thirteen to twenty-four attempts suicide every forty-five seconds in this country. One suicide is one too many. I do want to give a shout out to all the HCPS employees who work so hard every day to notice when our students are struggling, and to my mental health colleagues who work tirelessly to intervene. None of this work comes without a personal price. Mental health matters. Thank you.
Good evening. My comments will be partially towards the CIP plan, in which there'll be a later presentation and then some other general comments. I looked at various CIP plans, and it's always a head-scratcher to me as to, do we really need to resurface that track? Do we really need to do this, that, or the other? And I think there is a lacking due diligence on the part of the board in terms of okaying certain projects. Please examine the CIP budget carefully, keeping in mind what is wanted and what is needed. In, in terms of the whole The Flamer thing, book banning is a gaslighting term. Making sure books are developmentally appropriate is not censorship. It is protection of our kids' innocent. Should we all inform our little kids at Santa is not real. Don't we perpetuate that lie to protect our kids' innocence? Come on. Sorry, lost my train of thought. It's really hard to make a point in a minute or a minute and a half.
While we had the listening sessions.
The board might never have answered.
Hi, my name is Kiali Palamari. I'm a graduate of Aberdeen High School. I want, I'm here to say that I would like Flamer to be returned to the school libraries. I think that the board should follow the recommendation of the committee that it appointed. I think we're all in agreement that we want students to graduate with strong critical thinking skills, and I think that, that involves allowing students to challenge themselves with reading material that might be surprising to them, that they may agree or disagree with, and that they may go and talk to their parents or school staff about. And I think that in order for students to graduate with good critical thinking skills, they need to have books available in the library that will challenge them and will be, will, will be educational. And you know who's really good at picking out educational literature at an age-appropriate level? It's librarians. Maybe you should listen to them. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Nickerson, followed by Tom Pittington and Susie Scott.
Hi, I'm Lisa Nickerson. Thanks for listening to my comments tonight. I was at the prior board meeting, and I expressed my disappointment with the banning of the book Flamer. However, tonight, I know it's not on the agenda, and I think that there's a large group that would really like to just move on and to say, if we ignore this long enough, this will just go away, and the community members who are not pleased with this banning are just going to go away and tune into something else, one of the other major chaos issues that might be going on in our country right now. But that's not the case, because it'll only be another week, or another month, or another year, and someone else will have a complaint about a book that the librarians have decided is appropriate for certain age groups, that your committee has decided is appropriate for certain age groups. And then we'll be right back here again. So this is not something you can kick down the road, and it's a disappointment that it's not a major focus of the agenda tonight. So I would like to know what the next plan is. In addition, you mentioned at the last board meeting that your process would be reexamined. We would love to know what that means. Is that process reexamined? What is that process? And then lastly, I do want to acknowledge that a parent and a speaker tonight felt it appropriate to bully half of the people in this room and to insult us. That is inappropriate. It is disappointing, and I'm sorry that that person is a parent, because that's the example being set for our kids.
Mr. Pittington, please state the name of your group, and you receive two minutes.
I'm only at one thirty right now. Two minutes. Thank you very much. I'm Tom Pittington with the Black Robe Regiment. First of all, thank you, board members, for voting against the book. It took courage, it took backbone to do it, and you can see the, the people that are in here putting pressure on you. Just stay strong. You're, you're doing the right thing. That's the one thing that kind of puzzled me about this. Book banning, that's, that's, that's the term they use. Do you know what the number-one most-banned book in the world is? It's no surprise. It's the Bible. Places like Afghanistan, North Korea, Yemen, Oman. I've been to several of those countries. And trust me, I'll tell you, it's no picnic out there, and it's nothing like this, but yet there's certain people in this room that would have you believe that that's the direction we're going. No, we just want to protect our children's purity. We don't want to bring our children into an adult environment that quickly. You talk about diversity of thought, the big D-word, okay? About all of that. Do you know with the protests that took place last, last month for this book, the people that are here now, all adorned in purple, all to be alike, all to be one with each other, and not a single teacher did I see that stood against taking the book out? Or, I'm sorry, that stood for taking the book out? It doesn't appear as though in, in so many of these groups, within the educators, within, within the librarians, it's one thought, no diversity of opinion, no diversity of thought, and let's march. And then they turn around, they say, "Trust us, we're the teachers." No, I can't trust that. You're not teaching critical thought. You're teaching one mind of thought in a circumstance like that, and we can't stand for that. I have a lot more to say, just like a lot of us do, and not going to get the opportunity to do that, but I will also tell you that I'm a product of Hartford County Schools, a class of seventy-eight of Aberdeen High School, and I'm also a product of bullying, mostly racially oriented. I had to deal with it. I respect and understand how bad.
Ms. Scott, please state the name of your group, and you receive two minutes.
Thank you. Susie Scott, Moms for Liberty, Hartford County. Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for the extra thirty seconds. Today, our president spoke at the Museum of the Bible, where he discussed religious liberty in public education. He announced new guidance that will be coming from the Department of Education aimed at protecting prayer in schools. In his powerful address, President Trump emphasized the enduring role of faith in America's identity, and he announced the launch of the America Praise Initiative, which is a call for Americans to unite in prayer for the nation's strength, peace, and prosperity as the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Declaration of Independence approaches. At this event, the president invited a twelve-year-old public school student from California to the podium. This young man explained that he was forced to read a book to his kindergarten buddy that promoted a message of radical gender ideology that is contrary to his religious beliefs. The boy, whose name is Shay, said, quote, "I've been a Christian my whole life, and Jesus means everything to me. When I was in fifth grade, my school forced me to teach my kindergarten buddy about changing his gender using a book called My Shadow is Pink. The book said you could choose your gender based on feelings instead of how God made us. I knew this was not right, but I was afraid of getting in trouble. After my family spoke up, the school treated us..." After my family spoke up, the school treated us badly, and kids started bullying me and my brother because of our faith, and the school did nothing to stop it. It hurt a lot, but I kept trusting God. I believe kids like me should be able to live our faith at school without being forced to go against what we believe. I hope no other family has to go through what mine did. Well, unfortunately, there are HCPS families being treated badly for the same reasons this brave boy expressed, and I hope that HCPS will do something about it. You do have a responsibility to all students. The fight to indoctrinate our students with this radical gender ideology is something you must address. Stop hiding behind excuses, and let's get back to the basics. Our MCAP scores are nothing to be proud of."
Our next speakers are Anne Hartig, Christina Lenosha, David Fabey, and Felicia Martin.
Hello, my name is Anne Hartig. I'm here to urge you to celebrate books' stories. Today is Grandparents' Day. I couldn't make the breakfast at my granddaughter's daycare, but I celebrated by reminiscing about how we spend time together. At 18 months, she loves to read, and each time we spend together, a portion of it is spent reading. Her favorite story right now is The Little Blue Truck. She picks it first every time. Do you know the story? A little blue truck gets bullied by a big blue truck. It ends with the little blue truck and his friends digging the big blue truck out of a mud puddle. I don't understand why she's so enamored with the story and picks it every time. Maybe it's the pictures, or my tone of voice as I read the characters, or the story of a little guy winning over a big bad guy. What I do know is she is reading, and she connects with it in some way, and that's enough for me. When she gets older and continues to select books of her own, I expect to still be very present in her life and share her experiences, literary or otherwise, however I can. Stories connect with different childrens for different reasons. Let's celebrate their choices and do our jobs as parents and grandparents by being available for shared discussions. Reinstate Flamer and another book about bullying, and let those conversations get started. Thank you.
Yes, we do need God back in our schools. Matthew 18:6, "But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to stumble, it would be better for him to have a heavy millstone hung about his neck and to be drowned in the depth of the sea. This is not a threat, this is a promise made by Jesus Christ. He is judge, not me. Choices must be made, salvation or not. For the following reasons I call for the dismissal of the superintendent: the lack of oversight which has been allowing and continues to allow such vulgarity and sexually-explicit books in our schools at the cost of every taxpayer in the county. Is that fair? The allowance of gender ideology in our schools while, of course, disallowing Christian ideology; the allowance of diversity, equity, and inclusion, which is just another name for discrimination, this time against whites; and the consistently low and still unacceptable math and reading proficiency rates. The superintendent has been at this job since 2018. I believe that seven years is enough time for him to be enabled to significantly increase our student reading and math proficiency rates. Doing so is the core part of his job. He had a goal of academic rigor this past year. I'd like to see that goal realized. I'm sure that Dr. Bolson did his best, but let us give another person a chance at making this all right. I would also suggest that that person be someone invested in our community and therefore not commuting from another county to direct our students. May God continue to bless and guide you all in your decision-making."
Hello, good evening. The blue shirts, purple shirts, will have you believe that words matter, and they used the word "banning books" over 22 times tonight. We didn't ban the book. You guys made a decision to remove the book. So words do matter. Use the right words. On January 20th, President Trump signed the Executive Order 14168, Restoring Title IX Protections for Girls, Young Women, Females, and reaffirming there are only two genders, male and female. No more boys' and girls' sports, no more boys' and girls' bathrooms or showers. For all the parents in Harford County, if you're aware of this and see this on the sports fields, feel free to report this to the website, ndei.edu.gov. It's a very simple, one-page form. The U.S. Naval Academy in Annapolis, after evaluating over 900 books, promptly removed 400 books from its library that promote DEI. The curriculum is being reassessed at the Air Force Academy and at West Point in support of the Executive Order 14173, removing DEI from the entire federal government. Harford County's largest employer is the federal government in Aberdeen and Edgewood Proving Grounds. In September of 2023, Melissa Hahn, District C, asked the board to remove the following books: Gender Queer, Flamer, Lawn Boy, All Boys Are Blue, A is for Artemis, and Let's Talk About It. Please, considering allowing board...
Thank you, sir. You can submit the rest in writing if you'd like. Thank you.
Is there a Felicia Martin? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Felicia Martin, and I'm a retired teacher. And there were a couple of times in my teaching career where I said, "The decision is final," and parents and students came up to me and made me reconsider, and some of my best moments were when I did step back and reconsider what I thought was a final decision. I love to read, and I got a book from the public library many years ago, and I remember at the time thinking, "Oh, this book is intense. I don't think I want my teenage daughters reading this book." And I was surprised to see it in the high school where I was teaching. It was in that library, too. And reflecting back, I was right about one thing and wrong about another. I was right about not imposing my individual thoughts about this book on others. It would never have occurred to me that my one opinion would be more important than my colleagues who review books. What I was wrong about, and am frequently told, was underestimating what my teenage daughters could handle. I was speaking with one of them yesterday, and she said she would rather learn material in a book than be blindsided by it out in the real world. So I encourage you to reflect on how sure you are about your opinion that you would limit our students' access to information. Thank you.
President Pointon, that's all the in-person speakers.
Thank you. Any virtual?
Yes.
Good evening. You are now in the Board of Education meeting. You will have one and a half minutes. Please state your first and last name, and you may begin your public comment now.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Hurley, and I am a librarian with HCPS. President Pointon suggested at the beginning of this meeting that the board is, quote, "done," addressing things such as the Flamer issue. But as you can see, we simply aren't letting this go. To my count so far, there's been over 20 people commenting that are against the book ban, just tonight, and that's not including the other nights. Board member remarks made at the last meeting contained factual inaccuracies and dismissive framing that undermined public trust, and I want to address them. First, as the board has been told many times, librarians already agree that Flamer doesn't belong on the local shelf. The librarian PLC reviewed the title and said it belonged only in high school collections based on professional reviews and grade-level guidelines. To suggest otherwise is misrepresenting our work. Secondly, the president himself repeatedly noted that the book is recommended for grades 10 to go. Well, that's high school, and that's exactly where librarians put it. So please return it to high school libraries where it belongs. This is not about parent rights. As others have said tonight, parents already can limit what their own child checks out. The librarians honor those requests every single day. You chose to strip away the rights of the other families who would like to access this book in our school. In his comments last month, President Pointon suggested that continuing to talk about the improper removal of Flamer is distracting from the, quote, "real story" of HCPS, which is student achievement. Intellectual freedom is not a distraction from student achievement.
You have reached the one-and-a-half-minute mark. Thank you. Good evening. You are now in the Board of Education meeting. You will have one and a half minutes. Please state your first and last name, and you may begin your public comment now. Phone number ending in 7542, I believe you may still be muted. I believe it is star six or star eight. I apologize. Star six to unmute. Again, phone number 7542. Please try star six to unmute.
Is there another one? Maybe we can just come back.
There is. I know sometimes it takes a beat. Just wanted to give them a second, but yes, I will go ahead. 7542, I'm going to take you out of the meeting if you'd like to call back and try again, and we will be moving on to the next caller at this time. Good evening. You are now in the Board of Education meeting. Please state your first and last name. You will have one and a half minutes, and you may begin your public comment now. Phone number ending in 4830, you may begin your public comment now.
I'd like to read a quote from Fahrenheit 451. There was a silly bird called a phoenix...
If you would please state your, please state your first and last name.
Oh, okay. My name is Eli Burby. I'd like to read a quote from Fahrenheit 451. There was a silly bird called a phoenix back before Christ. Every few hundred years, he built a pyre and burned himself up. He must have been first cousin to man, but every time he burnt himself up, he sprang out of the ashes. He got himself born all over again, and it looks like we're doing the same thing over and over, but we've got one thing the phoenix never had. We know the silly thing we just did. We know all the silly things we've done for 1,000 years, and as long as we know that and always have it around where we can see it, someday we'll stop making the funeral pyres and jumping in the middle of them. We pick up a few more people that remember every generation. Another is, most of us can't rush around talking to everyone, knowing all the cities of the world. We haven't time, money, or that many friends. The things you're looking for are in the world. The only way the average chap will ever see 99% of them is in a book. Thank you.
Good evening. You are now in the Board of Education meeting. You will have one and a half minutes. Please state your first and last name, and you may begin your public comment now.
Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Yes, I just read my public comment. Am I getting mixed up with someone?
Yep, you can go ahead and hang up it since your public comment concluded.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, phone number ending in 7542. If you can state your first and last name and begin your public comment now.
Leslie Thompson. I have been here, you know, a few times now, and I know, I'm sure, it feels like it's getting old to a lot of people that we continue to have this conversation, but I want to echo what some of the other folks have said tonight, that until we have resolution that works for everyone, we're not going to let this go. I wanted to speak to something more specifically, though. Dr. Pointon's guest commentary in the Aegis in Baltimore Sun a couple of weeks ago, he, of course, made his, you know, general, regular arguments about the number of swear words, which you are very welcome for that data, sir, happy to provide. But he also talked a lot about parental rights and it being about parental rights. I don't see how my parental rights are being taken into account in this situation, which is why, and however many other parents that don't agree with this decision. But to me, it really amounts to the fact that if you're a parent whose ideologies agree with yours, those are the parental rights that you are wishing to uphold, and the rest of us, it doesn't really matter.
Does that conclude your public comment for this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. You are now in the Board of Education meeting. Please state your first and last name. You will have one and a half minutes. Again, please state your first and last name, and you may begin your public comment now.
I don't agree with this decision. But to me, it really amounts to the fact that if you're a...
Phone number ending in 5317.
Julie Parker. A program called Lifewise has been implemented in many states across the country with astounding success. I am talking tens of thousands of public school students. It's a prime example of diversity in curriculum, as it would fulfill the agenda for a well-rounded student, enhance their critical thinking skills, and build character and morals. It's filled with timeless, ancient wisdom, beautiful poetry, history, and truth. Imagine that. Yes, I'm talking about Bible curriculum approved by the Supreme Court 70 years ago under three conditions: off-school property, privately funded, parents permitted only. Board of Education, why are you having a problem with getting a pilot class started in Harford County? We are truly behind so many other states, and the students are missing out on such rich curriculum. 78% of Americans favor teaching morals and character. Parents, go to lifewise.org website and get involved. Our students need hope in a world with none. Proverbs 1:2 says, "To know wisdom and instruction is to perceive words of understanding." Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pointon, that concludes our virtual public speakers for this evening.
All right, thank you, and thank you for your comments this evening. We're going to transition over to board member comments. Dias is a little bit different. I think we're going to start down with Ms. Perry this evening. Welcome.
Okay. Say, "Good evening. Thank you for coming out to support our students and staff. I agree that students should have access to books that are in line with our policies. We have a process in place that determines if books are appropriate to the grade level. In my opinion, banning books is not the solution." And this is something personal about me. As an Army veteran who has served overseas in South Korea during a conflict when we were put on alert due to the North Koreans coming across the DMZ to attack South Korea, the oath I took to our country, I also took the oath to do the best I can here on the board.
Thank you. Mr. Sewell?
I want to thank everyone that came out tonight and shared their thoughts with the board. I'm very proud of you and thankful that you are part of our community here in Harford County. I want to welcome everyone to the new school year. I hope students have had a great first week and start to this second week, adjusting to their school schedule, getting to know their educators, and digging into their new courses. Welcome to all of the new educators and staff we have this year. I hope everyone who supports the operation of our school system and ultimately supports our students has had a smooth start to the year. I look forward to continuing to support and advocate on behalf of our students, our families, and our educators this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mueller?
So I want to take just a minute and thank everybody who came out tonight and for their words. It's interesting, because we're worried about a book, but a book is just words, and everybody has spoken here, and I appreciate your thoughts and your comments, even those who don't agree with me. I'm okay with that. I'm okay hearing both sides. I want to take a minute and really thank the custodians in our schools. You know, sometimes I feel like they are the totally undersung heroes, because as school came to a start, I was over at Jopetown Elementary helping get some classrooms ready, and Kyle and Billy were there. Now, Kyle and Billy would come in the room, they'd help move a bookcase, they'd move a rug, they emptied the trashcans like 80 times a day, because when you're getting bulletin boards ready and that, you have that much trash to throw out. And it is amazing how they can make your day go so smoothly and how much they actually help you. And I always try to remember that as I walk through the schools, and I hope you all do too, to thank the custodians as you go by. You know, one guy was sitting there with a mop dusting off the walls, and I was like, "Thank you so much for doing that." And he kind of gave me this look like, "What are you talking about?" But it really is a lot, and it means a lot. Kids are proud of a school that's clean and comfortable and that they feel belonging in, and having that room be nice for them is so very important. I went back to my high school 50 years after I graduated from it, and I was like, "Dang, this is a pretty nice place." You know, not that I ever spent much time there, but I do want you to realize how important it is that they have a place to be proud of. So I wanted to mention that, and just thanks to all of our educators as they got ready for this school year and for the amount of time they put in with our students, because it's amazing, everything that they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McVicker III?
Thank you. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking tonight. I personally, you know, listen to every single comment that's given and take it very seriously. Thank you also to the student who spoke. I find that this is sometimes very difficult, so I pride you for coming out here, and I don't think you're here anymore, but for coming out here and speaking, that's truly awesome. So I also wanted to hit on my SMOB Monthly Minute. So that's a one-minute video that the student member... So that's a one-minute video that the student member, actually, it started last year, but the student member posts every month on the HCPS YouTube channel, and it's also sent out to principals and some, and staff. I recently filmed September's monthly minute, so I encourage anybody who is interested to please go and watch. It's, it's just a quick little update about what's been going on, on the student's side of the Board of Ed. I'm currently in the process of planning and executing school visits, so I am working through different members of HCPS leadership to plan all of these visits, but I do plan to visit all of our elementary, middle, and high schools by the end of the year. I'm going to visit about two schools per week on Wednesdays, so I'm very excited to start that. It's definitely a heavy undertaking, but it's, it's going to be fun. I also wanted to say that I did read the book. I read the book, Flamer. I wanted to thank the member of the community that lended me her book to read, and I'm not going to say her name just to respect her, her privacy, but I do want to thank you for that. I'm not yet going to share my opinion on whether or not I think it should or should not be in our schools. This is more of just a personal thing. But I do want to say, and I do want to clarify some, some common misconceptions that I've heard through our comments. I currently am in school. I've been in school for the last however many years, and I still, obviously, am in school, I'm in high school. And some of the words that you guys, or that everybody has mentioned that are in the book, that you're concerned about hearing, or your students hearing, I will say that all of those books, or all of those words are heard on a daily basis numerous times throughout the day, whether they're better or worse, or in different circumstances. So if, if, I just want to say that if that's the concern, I just want to make you all aware that that, if I do end up commenting on it in the future, that is my basis, is that I walk through the halls and I hear way worse words than are, that are in the book. So just wanted to throw that out there. I also wanted to make a comment about the calendar that is currently being considered. And I want to just start it off now, because I know that this is going to be coming up in the next few meetings, so I just wanted to kind of set this. I believe that the calendar should be placed in the year to, I think that our first day of school should be before Labor Day. I know this might be a bit controversial, but for somebody who has taken many AP classes and many AP exams, six to be exact, I've taken six throughout my high school career, and after Labor Day start, or later in the school year start, is, it makes it extremely difficult on students who are taking AP tests or taking AP classes to get all of their coursework in, in time for their exams, to hopefully pass and receive college credit, you know, if it's accepted at their university, or, you know, for their future. The, for those who don't know, AP tests are taken on the same day across the country for every single school and every single student. So what you see is, is other schools and other districts that start after, or before Labor Day, sorry, the schools that start before Labor Day, their AP test scores are substantially higher. That is a statistic, you can look it up. And that is because teachers have the opportunity to teach and get all of that material in before the test, which is administered on the same day. So that is my reasoning behind why I think that, uh, schools should start before Labor Day, because I just know, sitting through my AP tests or my AP classes and them saying, "Well, the test is, you know, mid-September," or, sorry, not mid-September, mid-May, and we don't have enough time to get everything in, so we're rushing through stuff, and, and it, it's quite hard to receive all the material that quickly, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corn.
I don't have any comments other than, well, I do have one. I didn't vote on the book, Flamer. This is a persistent issue in the last few meetings. I, I think everybody keeps talking about, well, I hear everybody speaking about book banning. I've heard the word ban more times than I can count, and I don't think this is really an issue about book banning. It's about age-appropriate books. No one's banning books in your house, no one's banning you from buying a book or getting it on Kindle, Kindle Unlimited for free. I've read the book. The problem that I have with the book, and if I had the opportunity to vote on it, I would certainly remove the book from being accessible to any child, prepubescent child. The thought of my ten-year-old looking at a, a roadmap of how somebody was going to be able to cut their veins with, with pictures in the book is just so abhorrent to me. If you have somebody who's going through the issues that this boy is going through in the book, it seems to me the proper course would be to love the child more, provide support, emotional support, guidance. It certainly wouldn't be a roadmap on how to kill themselves. It seems like that would be antithetical to the goal that everyone seems to want to achieve here. So, no, I would not let my ten-year-old daughter read the book, and it's about age-appropriateness. It's not about banning anything. You're not banned from seeing the book, no one's banning you, but it shouldn't be available for, for children who were of tender years. And that's what this is about. It's about age-appropriateness, not about banning. That's, that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I just wanted to say, welcome back to school. I hope everyone had a wonderful first day and week. I was able to attend the first day of school celebration and fiftieth anniversary at North Hartford Middle School. It was great to see all the smiling faces of our students, teachers, and staff as they entered the building. What a great way to start the year. Thank you to the Principal Manzo and all of the staff that hosted. It was a great job, everyone. Thank you. I have read Flamer from cover to cover. I spoke last meeting about the book and why I voted the way that I did, and I still stand by that decision and that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to announce about, you know, Patriot. Constitution Day is coming, and we will not be meeting before that again. And every member of the Board, I have passed out to you a copy of the Constitution. And, you know, it's a good reference, because it's small, it's not a big book. But what, what, one thing that struck my mind was, it says, "As a museum of we the people," and this is where you can get it, "The National Constitution Center. The center brings the Constitution to life for visitors of all ages through interactive programs and exhibits. As American Town Hall, the center brings the leading conservative and liberal thought leaders together to debate the Constitution on all media platforms." So, you know, right now, this is the time for us to educate ourselves, get involved in the civic processes that are going on, and understanding what this document really means. Now, Harford Community College and the Hayes High House will have a Constitution Day, and you can go on their website, and it's Wednesday, September the seventeenth. If you don't know of any other activities, activities around Constitution Day, please do that. But our schools have activities about Constitution Day. And last year, I participated with the Havert Grace Elementary School, and it was exciting to see the students getting involved and being patriotic. So I would encourage all of you, if you've got a school in your community, especially the elementary schools. My fellow board member who used to be here with us, she went out and purchased these little armbands, and the kids were just so excited to get one. I've gone to get some flags that I'm going to turn over to, oh, God, you know, when I make a leave and she's looking right at me, Dr. Mack, so that, you know, she can make it available to schools as they prepare for acknowledging and being very good patriots. And I would just encourage all of you, visit a school, see the little ones, and help them to understand what this country is all about. So thank you for coming out, and I look forward to our next meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Alvarez?
Hi, I just want to say, I'm sorry I'm not able to be there tonight. I want to welcome everybody to the new school year. I know that there's, that the staff has worked very hard to prepare for this year, so I hope that we can have a very successful year. And I did want to just say one comment about some of the public comment, and also the comment that our student member made about the language that is heard on the school grounds. I know that we have tried to take a look at discipline, and I think that we need to, you know, not encourage, I'm sure we don't encourage, but that we correct our youth from using this language that is inappropriate in our schools as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Couple of things. First of all, I had the opportunity to do some school visits this week. It was amazing to see the energy of the students, the educators, and I think our educators are doing an absolutely amazing job with the classrooms. They all look so bright and colorful and fun. It was really, really a fun and inspiring place to, to learn. This year, we kicked off at North Hartford. I want to thank Mark Manzo and his staff for an amazing job that they did there, as well as all the board members and the community leaders that were there. Unfortunately, I couldn't make that one, but it looked like it was absolutely amazing, and I regret not being there, but I had to put my own kids on the bus that they had, some of them going off to school, new school their first day. It was also the school's fiftieth anniversary, which is amazing and a great new story, but the school's also fifty years old, I believe, right? Isn't that, that's like the sad part of it. So one of the things I'm going to ask the Board to do this year and to work with the county is taking a good look at building some new schools in this county, some new modern schools. Just a couple other responses to some comments this evening from both board members and the public. First of all, I wasn't going to say any, anything on the book, but, you know, there were a lot of people that said, "You walk through the hallways and you hear this language anyway." Look, I was in the military, okay? I played sports, I get it. But my son, who has an early birthday, started middle school this year, and he was ten years old. This book was in middle school libraries, okay? If your son or daughter wants to come home and speak that way, and it's acceptable for you, well, that's on you. But if my son came home and called me some of the things that were in the book and said those words, which I've never said to him or spoken to him, and he's never uttered those words, and he learned it at the school system, let me tell you, he would be in big trouble, and so would the, the school system, because I would be right up there making comments. So that was my perspective. Regarding the calendar, this is, you know, we're going to start to talk about the calendar this evening. For some reason, this is always a very touchy subject. I will say that next year, we are actually looking to start, or recommend to the committee to look at starting before Labor Day. There's pros and cons to both sides. We'll never make everyone happy, but you also have to remember that some years, Labor Day is early, and some years, it's late. It was very early this year, and next year, it's late, so it makes sense to start next year. Otherwise, we're not starting school, I think, until like September eighth or something like that. So next year, the way the calendar falls, it makes sense to start early, and I think that's a good compromise on both sides of the issue. I agree with Ms. Bruce with Constitution Day coming up. I'm glad that we will celebrate that in our schools. I'm glad that we're bringing back a stronger Patriot program. I think that this community, Hartford County in particular, because our largest employer is Aberdeen Improving Ground, and we have a large number of vets here, including vets who I learned tonight, you know, were, were in Korea, and I think at some point about half the Board here has done some sort of military service. I do think we are a community that values service and values patriotism, so I would ask you to please, you know, encourage those celebrations to happen at the school like the Board does. Lastly, I will say that there was an issue that, over the weekend, surprisingly gained significant public attention on Facebook of all places, places where, of course, everything is true. This was posted on a place called Hartford Happenings. It did nothing but resurfaced an old matter that's not really an issue right now, and that is regarding student bathroom use. The post falsely claimed that I approved a practice allowing boys in the girls' bathroom and girls in the boys' bathroom. That's not true. The letter that's being circulated predates my time on the Board and doesn't reflect any action that I've taken. The facts are that Maryland falls under the jurisdiction of the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals, and those rulings legally bind the school system. In 2020, the Fourth Circuit Court held that schools must permit students to use restrooms consistent with their gender identity. The following year, the Supreme Court was asked to review the case, but declined, leaving the Fourth Circuit Court's decision in place. As recently as last week, the federal court on September fifth reaffirmed that the decision is, quote, "unconditionally recognized and remains the law of this court and thus binds both the court and its parties within the Fourth Circuit." So I'm telling you this because this is not currently a matter of Board policy. It is not currently a matter of state-level discretion. It is federal law that has been interpreted by the courts that govern Maryland. Now, there's a lot of confusion around this, because other courts around the country have reached different conclusions. For example, the Eleventh Circuit Court, which is Florida, Georgia, that area, has ruled the opposite way, and this has created a split vote among the circuit courts. That split vote didn't really exist in 2011, when the Supreme Court went to look at this. So now, it's possible that the Supreme Court may have to resolve the issue, since there are discrepancies at the lower court level. However, until this happens, HCPS is required to follow the laws it currently stands in Maryland. I also want to acknowledge that I understand that this is a divisive and a sensitive issue. I recognize that some students may feel uncomfortable. As a matter, as with any matter that we deal with in the school system that causes a student or a staff member discomfort, whether it's this, or bullying, or harassment, we take it very seriously. The students should bring it to the attention of their teacher or the administrator so that appropriate accommodations can be made, and the school system listens and we make accommodations. While this certainly affects us locally, it is not something that the Board currently has discretion over. Any change to the governing standard would have to come at the federal level. So those are the facts. Please be informed. Look up the case law. Don't get your news from Facebook. All right, we're going to move on. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to old business, of which we have none, and then Item A, Consent Agenda. Ms. Page, could you please read the consent agenda?
Item one, transfers between state categories for the FY 2025 budget. Item two, Edgewood Elementary School skate park surplus parcel. Item three, surplus property at Norseville Elementary School for the Norseville Park Project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve?
I would like to remove number one from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, transfer between state categories has been removed. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda for items two and three?
Ms. Melissa and I move to approve the consent agenda for items two and three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. Thank you. Items two and three pass. We'll go back to item one, Ms. Hahn.
I requested last week the breakdown of what, or a line-by-line copy of the budget that went along with these category requests, and I got one last week, and then I got five of them today. So I'm asking to table this until the next meeting, so that we have a chance. I mean, some of them have fifteen thousand line items, and I just wanted the opportunity to look through before approving this transfer.
Are there any specific questions that maybe Ms. Judge could answer now that while we're here as a Board? Do you like, anything that, would you want to call her up here and ask any specific questions, or?
I, honestly, like I said, I haven't had the opportunity to go through many of them that, you know, there's a lot of items. That, you know, there's a lot of items on there. So, I got them earlier today for the most part. So, I don't, I mean, I don't feel comfortable approving just because I want to be able to look through and see what they are before we approve it.
Ms. Judge, do you mind if I ask you a question? Do you mind just coming up here for the mic? So, just for my own clarification, so this, this is already approved in the budget. It's a transfer between categories. So you overspent in one area, you underspent in another, and you're just moving money around. Is that right?
Correct. So, basically, when we came before the board in May and asked for the transfers that were approved at that time, we were off. And in some categories, it was by $3,000. Electricity was the largest. We had a bill that was unexpected at the end of the year. So, that, we needed an additional $675,000 in that category. This is required for us to complete our audit. And it is not asking for more money. It is shifting money between those state categories. So, we can't move forward. We need the county council to approve this tomorrow night. And we can't move forward with our budget and finalizing the audit without this approval done. The state does not allow us to overspend. So, we are asking for, we've, we've met in small group. We always have opportunity to ask questions. I didn't receive your request, I think, until Friday. So, I sent 1 as an example because it was 2,800 lines. And I'm not sure that line by, like, you, you said, you just said the budget. But what you asked for was the line-by-line accounting, so I sent you actual expenditures. So, I don't know. I mean, it's 60,000 lines total that I sent you. So, even doing that, 2 weeks from now, I'm not sure you can get through all 60,000. I don't know that I could get through 60,000 lines in 2 weeks. So, I'm happy to answer questions at any time, but there is some urgency to having this approved this evening so that we can continue our process.
Okay. Any other questions?
I move to approve Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda, item number 1.
I second.
Okay. I sensed that there was a motion coming over here, but it wasn't made, so. I don't think so. Okay, there's a motion on the table. Rallo.
Mrs. Perry.
Motion, can you, can you restate the motion?
Approve.
To approve Consent Agenda, item number 1.
Yes.
Mr. Sewell.
Yes.
Dr. Mueller.
Yes.
Mr. McVicker.
Yes.
Mr. Corn.
Epstein.
Mrs. Han.
No.
Ms. Bruce.
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez.
Yes.
Vice President Page.
Yes.
President Pointon.
Yes.
This motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Judge. Okay, there's not a break on the agenda. Does the board need a break? All right, so.
Let's see how, how this goes.
What?
The next one.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Break in the middle, who knows?
Let's, let's take, let's take, let's take 10. Thank you. One change, and so I'm doing your job. Tell us.
No, I'm, please, continue.
Tell us what the changes are. Go ahead. I'll hand it over to you.
You are doing great. Thank you, good evening. Yes, as Dr. Pointon said, this is very specifically about changes to the calendar policy. The vote tonight is not a vote for virtual instruction. It is not a vote for pre or post-Labor Day start. It is, it is none of those aspects of the calendar. It is specific to 2 main things. The one thing is to move the number of embedded days for inclement weather. Now, it moves it from 6 to 3. What this does is, once we've exhausted our 3 embedded days, we are now able to ask for a waiver from the state for additional days if the state superintendent allows. It also could offer us the ability to then do virtual instruction, but that is a separate conversation. So the reason why they get tied together is, part of this conversation is that we have to have those 3 days in order to do that other thing that you're going to decide on at a different meeting. But, it also gives us the opportunity to apply for a waiver from the state after those 3 days. We are, if we need to take 4 days, 5 days, 10 days of inclement weather, we can, we will do whatever we have to do to support students, and then we will go through, for the safety of our students and staff, and then we will go through whatever state processes we need to ask for that waiver. Now, if we were to do this policy this year, and we, everyone voted to do the 3 calendar, the 3 days, we have a calendar that's published for this year that has 6 days. And in order to enact that now, we would have to vote on a different calendar that is outside of our normal approved calendar. And so to allow something like that for an extraordinary circumstance, we have put in there that that can be changed by a supermajority vote of the board. We have received, we received 4 public feedback comments about the policy, and they surround it on the manner in which the, the board can approve a new or adaptive calendar, including the idea of a supermajority. It also had other comments that are not relevant to this vote, such as who should be on the calendar committee, and whether or not we should start before or after Labor Day, as well as questions about, for families who want to be able to plan their days, as well as protection of the classic snow day. Again, the classic snow day is not at issue for this evening. This is about built-in inclement weather days in our calendar. And as you know, just for point of future reference as well, inclement weather includes more than just snow. It also includes wind, rain, and other extraordinary circumstances.
And then on the supermajority piece, there were some questions that the board members had about whether that should be a majority or a supermajority. So, just for context, the current calendar is approved by a majority of the board, which is 5 out of 9. Sorry, Trey, you don't get to vote on that one. Maybe we can change that. But 5 out of 9, a supermajority would be 6. But this would only be for sort of extraordinary circumstances where something like the law changed and it required us. So therefore, I guess it was felt that there would be a, a, a higher threshold. But currently, there's no provisions in there for any changes. So, if we made a mistake, or the law changes, or something like that, our, our hands are sort of tied, right?
Yeah, we would, the president would have to deal with that as we would, would manage it, no problem.
So this just gives us more flexibility sort of all the way around?
Yes, and that aspect was put in because of that heightened idea of what an extraordinary or extenuating circumstance is to really make sure that it is a, a well-understood reason that we need to change the calendar and that there's no ability for a board change or anything like that to change the calendar when families have been counting on it. So it's to respect the family's ability to plan, as our feedback indicated. And we are seeking a vote tonight to approve this policy change.
So just enumerating 300 things that, you know, it could be, you know, war, tornado, whatever. You just said, we'll leave it to the discretion of the board, but do a supermajority vote as to what's extraordinary.
Right now, we don't have a way to change it after the fact, right?
All right, so we'll open up, thank you. Yeah, we'll open up for questions or concerns. Mr. Corn?
Yeah, I have some questions. So what happens if the superintendent of schools, or, you said if it's not, if we do the, if, let's say we do agree to this change, and there are 3 days, and let's say you need 4 days or 5 days. So, and you said we need approval, is that correct?
So we can seek a waiver from the state. And the minimum days that you have to have built in in order to qualify for a waiver is 3.
And what, and what is, what happens if that waiver is not given?
If that waiver is not given, then we have to meet the 180-day requirement of schools.
So, what happens? Schools extended?
We would have to continue school for 180 days. So last year, so for example, last year, we had 1 school that we were denied a waiver on for the 180 days, and they had to go to school 1 more day. The superintendent, the state superintendent provided us a waiver because even, even though we hadn't met all of their requirements because we didn't want to end after Juneteenth, but it was with the caveat that this won't happen next year unless you're following our procedures and you have the, you've used all your built-in days, and you've done all of those things. So the, in order to qualify for a waiver, regardless of your district, or it has to have that minimum of 3 days. And that's what's written in the waiver policy.
And that was a change that was made to take it out 6 and make it 3. So that's the substantial change that we're doing.
That's right.
And, and, I'm sorry, what, and the supermajority, once you have a supermajority, since the board does seem to be a little bit contentious this year, you know, we, the chances of giving, 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 giving the ability for the board to change that policy would be harder with a supermajority, correct?
If something was an extraordinary circumstance for the school system, such as a change in a law or a national holiday, or any of these things, then I, then the board typically will rally together to do what they need for the best interest of the school system.
I don't, I don't think snow would be a situation.
I also, it's not a policy change. It's not a policy change.
Oh, he said snow? Oh, I thought, I, I don't understand the question.
Well, inclement weather includes snow plus other things, right? But snow is one example, right? Right, what, snow is part of the inclement weather days, right? Snow.
Yes, but I don't understand, but what's the question?
So we're using inclement weather here, but actually, it's for any reason, the school really needs to be, the school system needs to be closed, right?
Yeah, but, but the, but. Yeah, but inclement, inclement weather alone, you would use the sort of planned-out days, or you would extend the school system, or you would go to the state. It wouldn't come back to the board. The supermajority, I think, which is kind of what, I think what we're talking about here, would only be used if the, if the board passed a calendar, and then later at some other point, presumably during the school year, needed to change the calendar somehow.
That's correct. So it's not, the supermajority vote isn't about the actual snow days. That's about the actual calendar. So, let's, let's give a terrible hypothetical. We decide that we have to close on some random day in December. On, on Dr. Pointon's birthday. In order to do that, the board would have to have a supermajority vote to do that. But that's not the type of thing that would likely come before the board. A snow day does not have to come before the board to, to be called.
I understand that this is a separate issue with respect to the synchronous learning that you brought up last time with the hotspot devices that.
That'll be at the next meeting.
No, I understand, but I'm trying to get the connection because there is a connection, right? So, i- i- if, even though it's not being voted on today, you're saying that we could use this $200,000 for Wi-Fi for people who may not have Wi-Fi, right? For, you pay for the whole year, but that, that, that whole thing, that $200,000 ticket item would be used for what? For the 3 days that you have, or for any additional days?
Can only use them after your built-in days.
Okay, so, historically speaking, I mean, is there any historical data on how many days you've used over the, the school district it's used over the last?
Varies widely. Last year, we used 5 days.
Last year, we used 5 days. I mean, so over the last 10 years, the, I mean, on average?
I don't have that right now.
And last year was higher. I think it's actually trended lower. Eric, Eric makes those calls every day, right?
To that point, it was 5 days last year, and that was considered high.
Yeah, it's the highest, I think, since I've been here. But in this scenario, then, obviously, under our current board policy, we have to use 6 days before, you know, we're considering anything else. Or before we're eligible for a state waiver, but the state did us a favor on this one because it was getting late in the year. But in this particular case, like, if, we had had this in place last year, and we had approved the virtual instruction, the last 2 days would have been virtual instruction days. We could have done 3 to meet the state requirement, and then 2 days could have been the virtual instruction, if we so chose to do that. But again, I still think there's a lot of conversation to be had there about whether.
That is a separate, that is, yeah, that is a separate.
But if we are doing those 2 days, Mr. Corn, that is where the, the necessity for hotspots and things like that comes into play. So I think that's an important thing to discuss when we hit, when we decide whether we're going to forward with that.
The decision tonight, by saying yes to this, does not mean a yes for inclement weather. Or for, I mean, we're not, for, it does not mean a yes for virtual instruction. That is a separate vote and a separate conversation.
This is a prerequisite for that.
It is a factor that would help, that would make that happen, but it is not the only.
Technically, no.
What?
Technically not. You could still keep the 6 days.
Oh, you could still do virtual instruction after your 6 days. Right, but it, thank you.
So, and, so do, and we have any data just on average? I mean, do we use, do we use more than 3 days on average? Less than 3 days?
I think it's right about 3, last time I looked. It's right about 3.
I can't remember the last time we went over 3.
Yeah, I can't either.
It's not typical.
Yeah.
It, it, you don't have any control over the weather, and we're always going to make a decision, a recommendation to the superintendent based on safety. So, but typically, I would say we're right around 3. I say that, and we'll probably have an extreme winter. So.
So, so why, why did we choose, why, why has the proposed change 3, and let's say not 4 or 5?
Because that is the minimum required for us to be able to seek a waiver.
I think most counties are 3.
Yeah, and the previous policy had 6. So that's why we have to change it to the minimum requirement of 3.
And how long has it been 6 in Hartford County?
As long as I've been here.
17.5 years.
Is that true?
No.
He knows random.
It seems like a, a good time to change for, for.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
No, no, I didn't know, I didn't know. I thought we were, I thought you round up when you get to 0.5.
All right, any, any other questions? All right, this is ripe for a vote. I'll take a motion and a second to approve.
I move that we accept the proposed revised board policy 200002000 school calendar.
Second, please.
I second that motion.
Ms. Rallo's do a roll call vote.
Policy, not calendar. He's okay.
You can vote on policy.
Sorry, I caught it for a second.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Sewell.
Yes.
Dr. Mueller.
Yes.
Mr. McVicker.
Yes.
Mr. Corn.
Who?
Mrs. Han.
Yes.
Ms. Bruce.
Yes.
Mrs. Alvarez. Mrs. Alvarez. I will come back to her. Vice President Page.
Yes.
President Pointon.
Yes.
And one more time for Mrs. Alvarez. Okay, we have 8 to 1, so this motion passes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yvonne, yes, I'm yes.
Thank you, 9 to 1.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Item C, Presentation of 2027 Capital Improvement Program. Welcome, Ms. Kathy Bendis, Assistant Superintendent for Operations, and Ms. Missy Valentino, Facilities Planner. Welcome, everyone.
Good evening. All right, you ready? Good evening, President Pointon, Vice President Page, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolson. I'm Kathy Bendis, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. With me this evening is Mr. Christopher Morton, Supervisor of Planning and Construction, Ms. Missy Valentino, our Facilities Planner. This evening, we're going to be reviewing the FY '27 Capital Improvement Program for state-eligible projects only. I just want to reiterate that again, this evening, we will be talking about state-eligible projects only. We will be coming back to you at a later date to talk about our local funding needs. But again, this is only our state-eligible projects. We will not be needing a vote this evening. We want to give you some time to digest the information. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions. And then obviously, over the next couple of weeks, if any other questions arise, you can reach out to us. It will be on the consent agenda at the next meeting for a vote. And again, we're just going to review what is eligible for our state projects for the upcoming FY '27 year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Valentino, who will go through the presentation for us.
Thank you. Good evening. I always start by talking about our funding sources. We have 2 main funding sources when we're talking about our capital. We have our state funding and our local funding. Tonight, as Kathy said, we will be focused on those projects that qualify for state funding, but they also require a local match for that. These are the larger projects, replacement projects, systemic projects, things like that. When we're looking at our funding outlook for our state projects, we have, we did qualify again this year for the enrollment growth and relocatable classroom additional funding, and that will be added to our total state CIP funding. And that's addition to what we would typically receive, and that's just because we're growing a little bit faster than some of the other LEAs in the state. And then we have our typical CIP this year. They did change the way they calculated the targeted allocation, and they're projecting us to receive about. us to receive about the 10.9 million based on those calculations. And that EGRC money will be about 2.7 million additionally. That equals about 13 million. On our local side, we do require a match for that. We do have support for our Hartford Academy and Elementary School Project. They, we have worked with our local funding partners to kind of talk about our funding needs for that, given the restrictions on the state funding side, and they acknowledge the need to and support of forward funding, the state portion of that project, to ensure we enable cash flow. And that means that we're able to pay our bills and our contractors once the project gets started, since these are multi-year funded projects. And we're still having ongoing meetings really to talk about some of those more local CIP items, which we'll be back for. Just a few updates for this upcoming year. They did recalculate the way they, they, the amount of state participation in our projects. We did increase by 1% this year, so now we have a state contribution of 59% and a county contribution of 41%. For the cost per square foot, they go through every year based on the state average of school construction and update their cost per square foot. For that, that increased by three and a half percent statewide this year. Therefore, their funding formula increased that for their, per square foot funding. We are losing two state funding programs at the, this upcoming year. They, they sunset in FY26. The one is Healthy Schools. As you know, that's how we've been getting our roofs funded from the state portion side. They still required a local match. That will be an impact on our requests this year. And then we have our Aging Schools. That's kind of a smaller project-type funding source where we would be able to address emerging issues. Sometimes gym flooring may come up as a safety risk, things like that. We were able to move forward with those projects with that funding. That did not require any type of local match. Unfortunately, that will sunset as well.
If I could just say, because I think it's positive and good, with this last year, Healthy School, there were only three high schools that were, they, they received an unprecedented amount of requests because it's open to all LEAs around the state. A lot of LEAs are submitting roof projects. We were one of three that got approval for the roof because it's very large. So that is something to celebrate. And the Aging School Project, the best example is we're having issues at Dublin. And if that's where that money's going to come from, they'll wait for state approval. We will receive it, it's just process. But that's just to give you some examples, but that's all.
Yep. So this year, as I said, the, the Healthy Schools has gone away, so we moved the roof request back into our capital request. Luckily, the North Hartford High School roof was a big roof, so that was covered under Healthy Schools. Hall's Crossroads Elementary School roof is the next roof in our priority order. This would be the request for state, the local match required to complete that project. We also have Hartford Academy and the new Elementary School Project. We are still working through that, but I talked about that cash flow need. Basically, that 55 million will get us through that next year of funding, given the state target allocation. If we receive what the state has targeted as their threshold for our funding, we will be able to continue with the project. But you'll notice my state request there is a little bit higher than what we are targeted, the targeted allocation. That's for multiple reasons. One of those reasons is that Healthy Schools funding that you see coming through, that funding won't totally go away. They are, will be reworking how they give that funding out. And if we can put ourselves into a better position to take advantage of that state money, we're going to put ourselves in that advantage. We did discuss this with the state and they said it's better to keep it in your capital right now until we know the next steps for that. But if that other source of funding does come through, then we'll be able to work with them to reallocate that money to our other priority. And then you have the Hartford Academy and New Elementary School and you're thinking that request is also over that state allocation. We're really trying to maximize the amount of state funding we get. The governor has not approved a budget. We don't have a total amount. That's based on averages from previous funding years. That also takes into account that everybody's going to utilize their full targeted allocation. But all LEAs must have that local match and not all of them can always take full advantage of that targeted allocation. So what we've done is kind of included what would be about half of what the state-eligible amount is for this year so that we can keep our typical funding pattern and then minimize the amount that this local government would have to forward fund for the project. So if there is additional funding that comes available, we're basically lining ourselves up for them to be able to put it towards our project. Otherwise, they'll give us what they can allocate to the project, so it's not hurting us in any way. It's just allowing us to take advantage with our submission. With that, for our state timeline, we have the next Board of Education meeting. We, it will be on the consent agenda. Again, we will be answering any questions. We're here tonight and then throughout the next two weeks as well. We do, we will have to take whatever the board approves. We will have to get local commitment letter from our county executive saying that he agrees to fund the local portion of that and then we will make our state submission on October 3rd. Then we'll move into the local discussion. We're still meeting and developing scopes and budgets for that. We will have our work group convening for the priority scoring in October and we will bring that to the board in November for approval in December and then that will be submitted with the operating budget. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Open up the questions.
Yes, could, could you provide me with the list of the schools that have relocatables?
I could. We have a.
Please? Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm interested in that because of Bakersfield and I know that we've got a new superintendent, so could you do provide me?
Sure.
Yeah, it's no problem. We'll send it to Yvonne and then she could distribute it.
Okay, thanks.
Lots to take in. We're available for any questions over the next couple of weeks so that you can make an informed decision at the next meeting.
Well, it looks like the timeline's pretty tight, so you would need it approved on the 22nd for sure. Okay, now I would encourage board members to use the next couple of weeks to get any questions answered and I'm sure you'll make yourselves available.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, I already skipped over our vice president, so maybe should I skip over the superintendent too or do you want to?
I'll take a couple minutes if you don't mind.
She actually had no comments anyway, so she's not too mad at me. Sorry about that. Item D, Superintendent Report.
All right, just a couple of things tonight. I feel like we had a, a really fantastic opening. You never want to jinx that because the opening seems like it goes on for a bit, but great energy out at the schools. I think there was a lot of fun the first day for people. I think our schools worked really hard to make the, the students feel welcome. There were a lot of fun things happening in the schools. And so it was kind of nice to see. I think they do compete with each other a little bit about who could be the most creative, which, you know, that's fantastic, they're having fun. And so, I mean, there's so many people. I, I've been to just under 40 schools so far. I will finish, I think it's going to take me a little bit into next week to, to make sure I get to every school, but it really is exciting to have that chance to get through. I try to do that beginning of every year to stop in quickly and then sort of circle back through the year for more substantive visits. But seeing great stuff. Couple quick announcements. Maybe I'll start with this one here on the bottom first. One thing I, I got to do Friday before school opened, so the Friday before the holiday, I had a chance to tour Homestead Wakefield Elementary, our newest building. And I've kind of joked when I've been to visit other principals to say, I really don't want you to come and see it, just because it's such a beautiful building and it was, I mean, it was a ton of work. There was kind of a long political stuff that happened related to getting the school built, but you know, with a lot of help, we were able to persevere through that. I know our principal, Mr. Cook, said he never wants to be asked a question about which type of furniture to hire again in his life. Furniture is one of those things, if you open a new school, you, you realize that, that's a thing. And so he's gotten through that and he, in fact, I think he did a really nice job. The, the building looks fantastic. And, and you could tell that, that the staff in particular who've been waiting, you know, many of them have been there for years, you know, they, they were waiting for this new building and they're just so excited by some of the features of the building. And so we appreciate the, you know, the, the county and everyone who's worked with us to step up and, and help get that done. Coming up on October 17th, we just want to put this on people's radar, the, the Education Foundation's Excellence in Education Showcase is in the morning on the 17th. That is a no-school day. And so it's a little different for us this year, but there's going to be tickets available to it on the Education Foundation's website. And that is always an amazing day because in addition to sort of telling good stories about the work the foundation does, we also have a chance to showcase all of our varying magnet programs. And one of my favorite parts has always been as soon as the breakfast ends, I go out and I get to meet and talk to students from, from each of our, our varying, particularly the magnet and signature programs and the students are just so incredible as I talk through that. Coming up, Hartford TV will be covering athletic events again this year, so be sure to go check out the schedule and tune in. If you're attending a game, you can check GoFan and make sure to follow the bag policy. We had our first game Friday night. I know, I understand there were some long lines in a couple of places where the schools use the newer security measures, but we do appreciate people, you know, it'll just take a little time for people to get used to what the rules are. I think a lot of, you know, folks were asked to walk back to their cars and put the, you know, the knives that they normally carry. I know we have a lot of, of very practical people in this county who, who carry knives on a regular basis, not as weapons, but as tools. And so ask them to walk back to the car and not bring them into the game, those kinds of things. So we appreciate the, the community being cooperative with us through things like that. And now this is also, September 14th through the 20th is actually Community Schools Specialist Appreciation Week. And this is kind of, you know, this is a newer thing under the blueprint, the idea of community schools. And we have a lot of people in our buildings who help make those successful. I can say just anecdotally, while community schools were a product of the blueprint, some of the work going on there, it's really led to a lot of additional support in those schools and a lot of support for the families in those schools. And what we're seeing is it, you can't deny the link between that additional support and the fact that some of these schools that have suffered for years, you know, with, you know, very needy populations, we're seeing their growth accelerate at a rate greater than what we're seeing in, in many of our other schools. And, and so I think that the addition of the supports for families wrapped around these students, along with the extra bodies in the building to deliver on academics. So we're seeing academic achievement improve quicker there and I think that's just a testament to the work going on in those schools and all the people committed to, you know, making sure, you know, the families get the resources they need and the students in particular get the resources they need. So again, many thing, many good things happening, hoping to continue showcasing those for people. Couple more busy weeks of getting out to schools and getting the school year kicked off, but thank you to everybody who's made this possible. We have an amazing staff. We have a huge diversity of types of positions, people doing work, contributing in every possible way. But the one thing I try to remind our staff every chance I get is we, everyone we employ is an educator first. And, and we see that and we see the ways that our people contribute and they understand that whatever work they do, they're contributing to student achievement. And so thanks to our community and our staff and I look forward to seeing y'all in a couple of weeks.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would, I would like to ask that, I know for my district, I have three community schools and I know that some of the other districts, and for the new people who are on the board, could we get a listing of the schools that are in specific districts so that, and have representation so that the board members who are appointed to the board can have some idea of who the board member is in whatever area to try to cover the schools, please?
I think that'd be good for the public too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next board meeting will be on Monday, September 22nd at 6:00 PM. Meeting is adjourned.